The United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
And I guess I have a statement or petition and it's to Laura, our admin. Welcome back.
Hi guys. Hi everybody.
If you see, if you see in the camera in the corner, there's
I do.
Well, those are for you.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
So they'll be there for you to, they smell pretty lovely.
They look beautiful. Thank you so much. You guys didn't have to do that.
You were sorely missed.
Definitely missed you.
Yes.
I missed all of you too.
All right. Well, I don't think we have any, any other correspondence. So we'll go right to number four, which is a decision to vote on the date and time for the fall special town meeting to, for the closing date for the acceptance of articles. And I know that's really a function of having to have it delivered so that all the citizens in town know what's on the warrant. You know, before the meeting in a timely fashion and the date that the that the town clerk and the, and the town moderator has suggested is October 11th, 2023 to vote to close the warrant. So barring any, any objection or discussion, I'd look for a motion to to move to close the fall special town meeting warrant on October 11th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Number, number five. Application for Joanna Gilbert for the right of first refusal and removal of a parcel of land located at 109 Hartford Ave. Menden from, from chapter 61 forestry land, and this will require a vote of the select board. There is a there is a letter or an email from our principal assessor. That talks about she'd been working with the owners regarding the withdrawal of the 61. David, maybe you can just kind of summarize it.
Basically, she had been working with them to remove parcel from 61 forest exemption for the purpose of creating a house lot on her property. We did run it through both, actually through planning board conservation and land use. All of them said they, there's no specific use by the town for that parcel of land. As a result, I would probably, I would recommend that we grant the exemption and that we allow the removal of the parcel from 61 and not exercise our right of first.
It's only a half acre as well. I moved to not exercise the right to purchase a parcel of land located on 109 Hartford Ave. West Menden from chapter 61 forestry lands.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Number six. Creation appointment of members of the town administrative screening committee. And this, this also requires our vote. There are multiple, I know multiple people have volunteered. I know different members of this board have vetted it. I have a list of six really that, that came up. And certainly if there's anybody else, anybody wants to mention, but I have Tom Fitner from the Board of Health, Phil Sibley, Council on Aging, Ellen Agro, who is the elected town clerk, Joyce Gilmore from the Board of Health, Anne Mazur from the Land Use Committee, and James Purcell, Mr. Purcell is a retired town administrator who lives in town. And actually he was really the first town administrator we ever have when, when he was the, he called it circuit rider for, for Worcester County. So he was a town administrator for Menden along with, I think, maybe.
And Millville.
Right. So that would be the, the six of them that are suggested. I don't know if anybody has any other, anybody else they've spoken with, but I think I've discussed it individually, each one of you has made suggestions. So unless anybody objects, I'd be looking for a motion to create the screening committee with these three, six members.
Probably you better have seven, so you have. Let's tiebreaker.
Well, five.
I'm sorry?
About five. Same. I just don't want, it, one of those names I know is willing to do it if we need a body, but she seemed pretty, her schedule's pretty busy. So she had, you know. I don't know if you want to, I, if it's one of the names I gave you, I can circle back and confirm she, she's willing to step back and keep it at five.
Well, the other.
Or go seven.
No, I'm, I'm, either way.
I gave some names also that, you know, are all willing and I think qualified.
Well, if there's, again, I took this, I did a quick scan of the emails and I'm not, this isn't exhaustive list. So if there's another, a seventh one that wasn't mentioned that I think it's important for me to be a town resident to be living here now. But if there's somebody else, I mean.
I, I wonder about Sean Nicholson because of his familiarity with.
School committee.
I'd be on board with you.
Yeah. And you've spoken to him, right? Okay. So it would be Tom Fitner, Phil Sibley, Ellen Agro, Joyce Gilmore, Anne Mazur, James Purcell and Sean Nicholson.
Actually, I just heard another name that I believe cannot do it due to her availability. She, she actually told me she, she had to step back.
Anne Mazur. Okay.
So if there's another name.
So we're back to six again.
Yeah.
Does it, does it make sense to have the, the interim town administrator? I know they said to shy away from employees, but I think he's in a specialty and I'm throwing out for discussion. I don't know how you feel about that or. Well, yeah.
This is a member of the committee, so is.
Right. But I mean, I, I think that that's reasonable because you know, you're familiar with how things work in town.
And might be familiar with some of the candidates.
It's true.
Why didn't it come up? Why didn't we discuss this when they were on the, why didn't we discuss this one when they were on the calls? Because we would have interpreted him as an employee. I'm on board. I don't, I, but you're also very busy.
Yeah.
And like adding to your cognitive load.
Well, I, I had discussed it with him.
Okay.
Going it out there if we hadn't talked about it.
So if there's another candidate.
Lonnie, you ever?
There's any better consult.
Why, any of 60 seed or that? If you need somebody in a bit and nobody else steps up, I'll, you can throw my name in the, in the. I did it for a bit, so I.
Right, right. So do we, so.
So I guess I, I do have a question about like the committee itself. So I think the, the Collins Center had said that this would be more like an advisory though, not subject to open meeting laws.
Right.
That their, their role in screening the applicant.
That's exactly what they would do is that the Collins Center will be the, the gatekeepers.
Right.
That make sure that the people, everybody who applies it, the ones who are qualified. And then of the qualified candidates, the screening committee would screen them.
Right.
And, and, and when it went down to two or three candidates.
I mean, is there?
It would be a meeting, just so you're clear on that. It's a posted meeting, but it's held in executive session.
Awesome.
So that the candidates.
Still be a formal committee.
That's why we have to, that's why we would vote it, but it would not be, it would be a public.
Advisory.
Part of it is because some people who would apply, you know, don't want their name out there because of their.
First round of votes.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
If, David, if you feel you can do this within the hours allotted, so I don't want to infringe on those. Happy to have you on board, person.
I'll do whatever the board wants, you know.
Maybe now that Laura is back, some of your, I don't know if that will use some of your.
Yeah, it's actually been awesome. Last two days have been.
Yeah. I mean, I, it would be great to have you as a consultant and to those, to those people on that committee.
Right. And I would, I would say as a, as a, an employee, you're in a different category because you are not, you're not a permanent employee in the same way. So I don't see.
I think the issue is, the issue is he would, he would never end up working for this, working for the.
Right.
And there's no issues with the, I don't know, Frosk consulting of those two roles, the role of town admin with us and selecting the.
Well, I don't think any different than any other elected official or anybody else on here.
Right. That makes sense. Okay. All right. Well then, I, I would move to create a town administrator screening committee and appoint the following members whose names I didn't remember, but they were previously read.
Yeah. Tom Fickner, Phil Sibley, Ellen Agro, Joyce Gilmore, Jim Purcell, Sean Nicholson and the interim.
As so stated by the chair.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Number seven, application for a one day liquor license for uplifting heroes to be issued for an event truck pull that will be held at Barbell 88 28 Hastings Street, Menden, Mass. On September 30th, insurance in place for the event. And this will require a vote of the select board. And again, I apologize you were here two weeks ago, and I know I didn't make it on the agenda. So please feel free to come up if you'd like and. Right. Sure.
Tell us what you're doing.
This is our third year fundraiser for uplifting heroes, which is a foundation that we work closely with local special needs athletes. We're expecting around a thousand people. We are going to have Rashford and Sons from Upton be our beer vendor for the day. We're having a car show, touch a truck and the truck pull competition. Teams of 15 people pulling some heavy shit for 20 feet. Pretty much it. Yeah, yeah. You guys are around that day. So we, we partnered up with, with Imperial Cars. We can park spectator cars at his lot at Imperial and we are going to be having for police details with cruisers that day. Crossing people in 16, crossing people over at Millville Street by dunks. Yep.
Do I have a motion to approve the one day liquor license?
I move to approve a one day liquor license for beer and wine at Barbell 88 28 Hastings Street, Menden, Mass. On September 30th, 2023 from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. in the fenced in parking lot.
Quick question for you guys. We're, it's going to be a perfect day, but in case it rains, we are going to be moving the event to the following day, the 31st, which would be a Sunday.
So would we need?
How would that work?
Yeah, it would, just amend the motion to include a rain date of.
So I'll amend that motion.
Yeah.
Rain date.
It would be the following day, right?
Not September 31st, October 1st. Sorry.
That works.
Sorry, that's my first thought is you add one, but yeah, go with October 1st.
September 32nd, I was.
Motion made and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you guys so.
I think Laura will, will generate the one day liquor license and send it to the AVCC and you'll be able to pick that up.
All right, right on. All right. Thank you guys for your time.
All right. Thanks, Laura.
You're welcome.
All right. Lonnie, can you come on up so we can talk about the it's number eight, World Band contract and I just want to start by I don't think I've ever heard more positive things about a business than World Band. And I am particularly impressed with your relationship with Valley Tech. And just, I just want you to brag a little bit.
Yeah. Though Valley Tech, we've been, we've been working with Valley Tech since I took over World Band back in, God, I don't even know the date now anymore. 2009ish, I guess. And we started on that program with the, they had just started really ramping up the IT department shop that they have there. We were able to pull in, we were pulling in probably three kids at a time at that point. We slowed that down. I'll be, at this point now, we're starting to get, you know, pretty full up, but over 65% of our staff are all Valley Tech graduates. Some have gone on to college, came back. Some have gone on to college and left. And some have just come right out of school and skipped the college piece and stayed with us right on through. We do offer small incentive for the kids that want to go and if they do want to go on to college afterwards, we'll give them a little bit of money towards their tuition if it's for something that we're not, that we're lacking in, as long as they promise to come back for five years. So we've, we've, we've had a good success with that. And we're happy that we're able to work that. The program they have over at Valley Tech is really, really good. The, the kids are coming out with certifications in Cisco, Fortinet across the board. They're, and they're, they're ready to hit the ground running right when they come and that school does a tremendous job, not just in the IT shop, they're across the board, the, the Valley Tech. And we're, we're lucky to have those types of schools, especially that one in our area and so close.
So let's talk about the, about your contract. I, I think when you and I discuss this, does the first year match what was in the budget for the shirt?
Yeah, right. So the way that the, the first year is set up, so just to give a quick brief history. We had changed the way that we do business and how we price out. Everything used to be back in the day was on a a fund that you would buy a block of hours. If you utilize those hours, then you would get charged overages and it was hard to budget for that. We moved to a, a different pricing model where it's just based on how many endpoints do you have? And you just get unlimited support. It saved, it, it, there was a few things that happened with that, that you, your onsite liaison didn't have to approve every single IT request that was made. This allowed the end users to have better flexibility to then just be able to call it anytime they wanted, whether they be committee members. Again, this just opened it up to be wide open so that you don't have to worry about going over that a lot of amount of boxes. We're open 24 hours a day, call anytime. So we never changed the pricing for, for Menden. We just kind of kept it there. And then as things got crazy with COVID, contracts, all of the, you know, they, it just, we just honored it year after year after year at that same thing. We were giving the initial, I think it was, there was 20 hours, maybe or 15 hours a month that Menden was, was purchasing. We just left it at that rate. We've said we're going to honor that again this, this year. At some point in time, I'm sure you guys saw the, does everybody have a copy of?
Yeah.
So it's broken down in that addendum A on the annual cost breakdown. So the at some point this year, so there'll actually probably be some money left over too, because we're at some point in time, we're going to put in that, uh, moving stuff up to the cloud piece, up to the WB cloud, which would be the legacy KBS, which we're still utilizing. But we'll get that up in there. It's going to get rid of the physical servers on site. We'll take the IMC that's over at the police department. We'll slide that in. IMC is definitely a legacy at this point because they're not, they had moved to caliber when we went with the regional dispatch. So they're only using IMC for the historical data. There's only a couple of users over there that need to access it. So it makes it.
Is there, is there any issue with compartmentalization because of the, because of the law enforcement aspect of it?
No, right. So what we'll do is they're going to be on a separate slice, right? So up in, in the, in the cloud portion, we'll just keep them totally separate. And you don't even see the application icons unless you're given access to. So the few people that do need the access to, they'll only see the icons for IMC. Just like anybody else, if you don't need access to KBS, you're not even going to see the KBS icon. So all of those items you only see when we put those legacy applications up there, you'll only need to, you'll only see what you have access to. So if there's something in the clerk's office, uh, say maybe they're still using the dog licensing software that might be a little yes, one off.
It's off, but.
Like access database, maybe? Yeah. So. Yeah, exactly. So, but only they will see that application. And they'll only, they will keep the folders compartmentalized and secure based upon the user status as well. And, and it, it becomes so much easier to do in the, once we get things up to the cloud. Then even the old way of doing it on the servers, just it's a lot easier to manage from an administrative standpoint and to keep an eye on it. So it's a, it's a plus to get things up to the cloud. And it also the other part is although depending on how high of usage you, you use or how many users are actually using it. It's pre static here in Menden and it will, over that course of time, what it costs you to buy physical equipment for the replacement. This outweighs the option, especially when you want factor in backups, electricity costs and they already say new, when you have to buy a physical new piece, a, a, a physical server and it runs way better. The, the performance highly outweighs the, what you can get on a physical server without having to spend, you know. Let's say Milford just spent $60,000 or something on clustered environment and the the amount of memory and, and, and drive space and everything they put into it. With the amount we give it in the cloud, it outperforms it tenfold with very small amounts of resources. So the cloud is where it's going.
We, we still have some, some legacy documents, the things that are on paper that need to be digitized and brought up there. Is that, is that included in this or is that something you can do? Plus to this or?
It's not included in this. We looked at this a few times with, um, I think we might've even, I don't know if we talked to Valley Tech about it, but it might be an option that we had looked at different, there's different programs out there that Conica has or Kiocera or any of these larger companies where they're saying, yes, we'll send somebody down to scan your documents, but you've got to buy this hundred and $50,000 piece of software, which is essentially just storing the, the documents in the cloud. They talk about name recognition and character recognition and all this, which actually now SharePoint, which you already have, does. So it'll, it'll, it'll dig deep into the documents with keywords when you're doing a search and even give you documents with those words in the sentences. So that's essentially what you were paying for before, and I might've been a little crazy on that cost. It might be 50 grand. I forget, I, I want to say.
It's way more than share.
So that becomes the matter of each department just scanning their stuff in and actually storing it.
But the infrastructure, record digitization.
Correct.
We need people to do it now and figure out the indexing of it and such.
And we would, we would gladly work with each department. I don't know if I can dedicate somebody to come up here and actually scan the physical documents, but.
But you would support it if the different.
We would, we would come in.
By entering work, you need by teaching the help of the asset management committee.
Yeah.
Things like that as a structure, a structure of and providing instructions for the people to like enter that.
We can actually, we would definitely help with that aspect of it.
Yeah, that's really.
So this contract would include support for that endeavor.
Absolutely.
Not do the physical work of the scanning.
I want to be clear on support though, because it means by having, being on SharePoint and using existing infrastructure, by default, you support us. The question, when you get into metadata and how you want to store, those are going to be a lot of business and town decisions that you could consult on, but I'm not sure you'd.
We're not going to, we're not going to tell you, we, we would give you our opinion on structure, right? And then you say, yep, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Or it doesn't and we could adjust it. And we can show and, and work with the person to show them how to create the file structure for each department to make sure that it's done that way. For instance, I think I've even brought up already once that the, the, the account numbers are put in front of the, which I think might've been that the thought of that idea was good, but not, we didn't discuss it long enough.
You're going to a column.
Yeah. Right. No, I don't even know that they'd even need to be there. Like it makes my, it makes my head twitch a little bit when I look at it now. But I think that we could get rid of those and we'd like to actually get rid of those. But that's something that we can discuss at one, if we can work together to get that structure set.
Honestly, the planning is the biggest piece of a project like that.
Absolutely.
Actual work.
Yeah. Cause that way, I mean, that was done on a weekend and it broke a few things, but.
A question, cause out of scope are major upgrades in terms of the agreement to existing infrastructure? So would any cloud conversion be considered a major upgrade to existing?
No, all the conversions are, are included in the content. Yeah. The only the only thing that isn't is hardware essentially. You know, you need new switching, new, new, new PCs, things along those lines. We don't, that obviously that's not included in the cost. But when it comes to any type of consulting, any we also even look at, we'll sit in our meetings with software. So say there was a new software the town was looking at, any department, we'll sit in on those conversations as well. Cause consulting is considered part of the deal as well.
It's got to fit, right?
Yeah, right.
Is there any major hardware upgrades coming down the pike as things going into life or anything?
Yeah. Right now we're pretty good. Um, there was, uh, you know, with, there was, we did some upgrades. Actually did a lot of upgrades on PCs to laptops with some CareZak money back when, when that was happening. There was, and getting people to be able to work remotely was the goal there. And also that was when the switch to Office 365 and the implementation, implementation of Teams. So all of that has already been done. The networking equipment had already been upgraded prior to the the server is you know, I feel like I just put it in yesterday, but we're getting it to that end of life point. But that's why the plan to go to the cloud is already in play.
When I mentioned that, um, everything, I, I spent a lot of time with Lonnie and his staff and, and everything that they're doing is completely in line with industry standards. Everybody and and corporate land is, is doing this, moving to the cloud, getting rid of physical infrastructure, going to these enterprise, you know, size and work models where it's not about the individual person, but the org as a whole. So yeah, I'm happy with everything that they're doing. It's also in line with what we're seeing out in the industry. So the pricing is very fair.
How, what did you compare the pricing on? Because this is a significant jump over three years.
Yeah. So if you look at, if you look at the pricing for consultant IT, basically if you're a company that's not a town, right? And you hire out IT, the, the price is double what their three year price is essentially. So you know, it's a discount over corporate, but for municipal, uh, well, Lonnie would have to provide his contracts for everybody around us, but the, the other benefit is that his company is doing this in other towns, bigger towns, and is making those discoveries over there and bringing them back to us. So you know, I see a lot of benefits from a town perspective. He's got a lot of experience with towns, but in the corporate land, he's coming in under what you would find the regular cost to be to an enterprise customer. So yes, it's a lot, but we also have been underpaying them for quite some time based on the industry standards. Now, what happened with the town before I got here, it's, I don't know all that.
So I'm just curious. So the, uh, the annual cost for this year is that what's budgeted for these services? I don't, I mean, I don't have the.
Yes, it should have been because it's, because it's, it's flat.
It's flat. And so then it will be starting with next year's budget.
Sorry. I should say it's flat. I shouldn't say it's flat. I, but I believe it, because it was discussed. So I believe that and again, I don't have the numbers in.
Well, luckily we have our finance director in the audience. Do you want to? Jody, would you like to come up to the?
Fact. So I, I can tell you what the budget and I'm out.
Right. That's exactly what we're looking for.
Be top amongst yourselves.
So the, also, and, and I mean, I know this just from talking through the, the budgets before that there is there is generally a $10,000 item for new equipment that was generally used for PCs. I think was still good from the laptop rotation that we don't even, we can probably skip this year again on that. I know that we've talked about the, 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 doing those new meeting rooms.
Yeah, just moving this.
Yeah, downstairs.
Downstairs. And then you were, did you already order the, the camera? You're just waiting for it to come in, right?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't know if the quote was even sent over yet, but I think it's, it's all stuff that's in stock at the person, Christian that I work with and also Sunset Sound. The we needed a, that was what I would bring. That's where I was kidding. We need an electrical outlet in the wall downstairs.
Oh yeah. To install one for the TV.
Yeah. Right. So, yeah, that was one question that I had. And what I can do is we can, we can work to get that done, although I know Jack generally does, does the electrical work. So if you could ask Jack to just put in an electrical outlet, we'd be great, grateful.
I can tell you he's making that note right now.
On the comment of that, Dave and I also talked about a punch. Um, on the comment of that, Dave and I also talked about a punch list that um, the prior contractor in Town Hall. Uh, was working on just as a cleanup for the Renault, so we can just add that item to his list when they come in.
Okay.
This is almost up.
Now, what about, I know this is a, this is a three year contract. Obviously each year we would have to approve the budget at town meeting. How do you feel about, about a one year contract with proposals for a second and third year?
Totally fine. Oh, I mean, you can speak it's accept, you know. What do you call? Uh.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is rather than, you know, we've got this annual cost breakdown with a contract for three years. We would just tonight just vote the, the current year from seven one twenty-three, which you know, is already in play, the current year. And then just um.
And then, yeah.
Yeah.
Can do the next one next year, that's fine.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
Two years.
Or two years, right? We could do, we could do two years, right?
Yep.
The past, has it been three years typically?
Generally municipal contracts are three years.
So, yeah.
But again, we hadn't, but we had not, this, this, we had not actually haven't had a contract.
Since, what years?
I think, I'm pretty sure it was tw- uh, eighteen.
Eighteen, nineteen, probably.
Yeah.
Alright, so it's been year to years.
Generally, generally what the contract says at the end, I think at, at the end, it says, if this contract goes past, we will just honor the price until a new contract is negotiated.
No issue with the service, only hear good things. I like where it's going, you know, in terms of the infrastructure and where, where it's. From last time I was here in this seat to now. Million times better.
Yeah.
Um.
There, there, I can.
For me, it's now it's more policy, right?
Yeah.
And it's nothing to do with this contract, but I, I like the idea of two years. I wanna be somewhat fair to Lonnie, cause you've been, can, you've been flat for a while is my understanding. But at some point we started to get, have, we have to put all these contracts out to bid. I don't know if we've done that for this.
Well, this a- actually, um, you know, there are procurement laws that require that, but there are exceptions to that.
Right.
And this, and this professional service is an exception to that, where we don't have to go out for bid, not, not that we shouldn't or couldn't. But that's why I, I had actually asked Jason to really do some diligence on it, cause that's his professional. He's, he's, he's the guy.
But one other thing, uh, which came to light to us, which we didn't even know the state had done, is the, on the ITC contracts. Um, we're part of the small business program and they've actually. Changed it to anything under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we're in the small business program, we're supposed to get preferential choice, right? And what's that done is because these contracts are so hard to get on, they're near impossible. And they, they go for so long, so you have to wait, that this allowed smaller businesses like us to be able to now. Be listed as a, so we are on the combined list as part of each of those contracts, whether it be software as a service. Or services rendered like these, so which we're actually doing both. And if you have, and they've now outlined that within the actual contract. I believe I've sent that over uh, to you guys as well. I can send it to the rest of the board. I, I might've sent it.
I mean, specific to this Lonnie, if I remember correctly, the last time this went out to bid back fifteen years, we, we only had one bidder on it.
Yeah.
Which was.
And, and again.
In this area.
Sure, sure. It, it, just that, that whole. For lack of a better term, state bid list, like you know, if you're on the state bid list, you don't have to go out to bid. We are essentially on that network. So, just another option.
And I, I, I just, I know this is anecdotal, but uh, last year, uh, Elena and I went to a, a, a conference. For new select board members uh, from across the state. And one of the topics of conversation was IT and trying to get ba- basically what. Mike, what you were talking about fifteen years ago and where we were at, seems like there's an awful lot of. Cities and towns in the Commonwealth that are still where we were, where we were fifteen years ago. And it's largely because of you Lonnie and your company, that we're where we were and a lot of things that we just kind of seamlessly handled during the pandemic. Um, other company, other towns, cities and towns struggle and even the fact that, you know, we, we. As you know, we passed, when we were on the board together, we passed the bylaw that requires all meetings to be um, broadcast and recorded. And the ability to do it um, hybrid, the way that we do with Teams is something that we do here, but. A lot of other towns and cities don't, and they don't have the infrastructure or the ability or the, the support to do it. So.
So as far as budget goes, um, Lonnie was, was correct to say that we have adequate budget to support year one for sure. Um, obviously we would look to. Uh, the budget planning process for FY twenty-five and thereafter to incorporate the increase um, for year two and three, according to this contract. The line item um, in the budget is one line item for all of our computer maintenance contracts. So Worldband and other uh, platforms that we use, so uh. Yeah, there's that.
What's, what's that, what's that amount in that, in that?
Last year was a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Um, and it was expended, um, but we also have to know that there was more on that line item because of our conversion. From KBS.
But what, what's in the budget for the current fiscal year of?
The same.
One twenty-five.
Yep.
And this.
Because we paid so much for the previous conversion.
Well, it depends. So this is what I see one line item.
Right.
And if I knew, I would prepare a little bit more to be able to give you guys some.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Some additional information, because right now, just quick analytics, I can see what um, we paid Worldband in, in terms of invoices for last fiscal year. Um, but obviously there was a little bit more support there, so.
But this number, what I'm, what I'm seeing here for the July first twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. The annual cost breakdown, sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents. That's less than half of that line item.
And you can take another eighty, roughly eighty-three hundred off of that, only because. It'll probably be January timeframe before we get the cloud piece actually rolling, which, sorry, it gets to the point where it would actually start to be charged for. Cause we're not, it's, it's, it's in there that.
Okay.
Yeah, you're.
Wait a minute.
Sorry, hold on. Did I already calculate for that? We have figured into the annual cost of six months. I think I, I think what I'm saying on that low, when I, when I sent this to you guys, we have it figured into the annual cost, do not minus that amount. No, I don't, I'd be, I'd be reminded you.
Sixty-one, four seventeen.
Into account the six month reduction already.
So the, so for the, for year one, the, the current fiscal year, sixty-one, four seventeen, fifty-six, and year two, eighty-two thousand, eighty-nine, sixty. Does anybody have any other discussion or comments or questions?
Just be kind of, I mean, just, when, when you look at the um, the years we've been flat, it's probably, probably running flat with you for. Three or four years, it sounded like, based on your description, right?
Even longer than that, probably.
It was, we get to know that, because when you look at the increase over the next two, three years and you, you run that over. How long we've been flat, it takes some of the sting out, you know what I mean?
Correct.
So, I mean, I think it's, it's fair to say we've been running flat.
I could probably give you, I could give you the date of when we changed our pricing model.
Yeah.
Which would give you a timeframe of, of.
Yeah, people are just gonna have the natural reaction when they see.
They can, well, I, I can tell you, because be- before I had this job, I was the FinCom Chair. And I remember when I was on the FinCom, when, when that model changed, went to the different pricing, so it was about six years ago. And it's been flat for six years.
Yeah, so if you're looking at that increase spread over six years, that's much, that's not eighty percent, that's right.
Yeah.
And, and don't, yeah, right. So again, we're seeing, you're seeing the increase. It's been actually quite a, quite a considerable increase when we added in. Um, going to Office three sixty-five and starting that whole migration out, just cause there's a lot of. Uh, emails i- at the, in the town, but you'll see those numbers change. We're just increasing that support rate to where that should be. And I'm very confident that even if, uh, if, if you ask for other bits, we're still gonna be considerably lower than our competitors. We pay attention to what our competitors are doing and we know that we're still profitable at the numbers that we're at. And our main goal. Is truly to make it work so good that you wonder why you're sending us a check, right? We don't want you to call, because then we have to do stuff, right? So if we, if we're proactive and make it work i- as good as we can, it reduces the amount of load that we have. And that's how we're able to keep those costs down, because we spend so much time. It, it gives us, it, it allows us that time to make sure things are running perfectly.
Can you, secure IT product, can you talk a little bit about what that is?
Sure. So secure IT is, it's just the name that we gave it. It's a, it's your bundled service altogether. It's your, your, your um. Antivirus, it is your s- uh, twenty-four hour service, whether it be remote or onsite. There's an application, there's a, a, a client that we put on all the PCs that monitor all the PCs. If you are starting to run low on disk space, your processor is pegged out at all times. We, it'll automatically open tickets for us. We can be proactive on telling you, hey, something's wrong with your computer or hey, that sucker's really old, let's get rid of it. Um, it allows us to monitor all the networking equipment, servers, uh, the whole s- system is then ties into the ticketing system. Which allows us to be able to open a ticket, uh, contact the user, remote in.
And it's that bundle, it's the primary driver for the increase, cause you're sort of giving it at half the rate next year, in the second year, and then full price in the third year, so you're actually. Bringing us along slowly when you describe that service.
Exactly. And in, in that, you've been getting that service with all of those benefits. Without, without the increase in cost o- over those, those years. And again, the other, you know, uh. The other part of it too allows, if you do need to remote work, we can give you access through our portal for the individuals to be able to remote work. Um, however, that's even less utilized now as we more towards that Office three sixty-five, everything in the cloud piece.
Right. I wanna throw in there that um, Bonnie's paying, his company is paying like Windows Defender license fees, even if we aren't. So, you know, they've been eating the cost of the fees of all the software that's been running on our machines and those are all licensed to Microsoft. So thank all, all I fee that was passed through is the user cost um, for Office three sixty-five, so.
And, and the user, your definition of an endpoint, you said earlier, you said the number of endpoints, is that a user?
No, not a user device. Yeah, so you could, an, an endpoint could have fourteen users on it. That's why essentially. Now with that move to the cloud, with your Office three sixty-five, with your, your emails bundled, that everybody's one drives, everybody's in the, the, the corporate SharePoint. And then on top of that, it is now the new domain way of logging in, right? So where there's getting rid of that peer-to-peer domain in-house, uh, and allows you to now, we control everything via out of the cloud, right? What's that?
It's almost device and console.
Exactly, exactly right. And you can then log in as from anywhere as well, a webpage of, not that you wanna check down stuff. While you're in Aruba, but you could if you needed to, uh, from the, the PC and the. Oh, yeah, I, you can, you can do it from anywhere. Uh, and it doesn't, you don't even need your device anymore. It allows it on the cell phones that, you know, you can, there's so many different ways you can access the data.
Yeah, and, and maybe this is a good question to you. This sort of feels like we're plateauing at the end of year three to be where we should be, given the services we have.
Yeah, I mean, I would expect it to continue to follow the industry trends, but. I think what's gonna happen is we're gonna see this efficiency that's created by the, kind of the evacuation of the data center from this place, right? So cooling and electric is a big deal. Those things suck up a lot of power. So just getting that out, right, is probably, you know, twenty bucks a month worth of electricity and that adds up over time. That though gets offloaded onto the cloud, right? If what Lonnie finds is the resources they built for us are oversized, he doesn't need to go buy new hardware, he just reduces the size, we pay less. So I think what's gonna happen is, you know, three years from now, they'll know at scale how we operate, they'll have the. You know, comparisons with the other towns and you'll see bumps based on when we get more usage inside the town. So as the town grows and we get more larger committees and more employees and that sort of thing. Then we'll start to see the growth be linear with the size of the town as opposed to every big project is this giant. You wanna get on a track where you can completely predict what your IT service fees are going to be. So that you can plan for the big projects and, and to think extra pieces of software that are gonna cost money. We do those transitions, I think like Lonnie said, we would like to know for the next twenty years, what core IT costs. You know, are so that we can concentrate on the user, like the monolith software that's gonna help people do work order management or permit. Deployment or, you know, whatever the next piece of software is, and that's where you wanna put all your effort, stuff that people do every day. I mean, this stuff just works, right? And uh, if you don't know who your IT person is and you never have to talk to them, that is literally the perfect service. IT guys, all they do is sit there and suffer from all of the calls that they get. Uh, and work their way through it. If they're not suffering, they're not doing their job, but if they're not hearing from you, that means they did an amazing job, just nobody knows it. And so that's where you get, you get to that plateau state and it's predictable based on usage.
Y- y- yeah, but, so. Their usage here shouldn't, shouldn't really change much as far as if we're talking about the cloud type of usage. If we're talking about usage as endpoints and individuals, of course, as the company grows. Would grow per, per user, but that's it.
I don't see the annual cost ever coming down. Real, realistically, right? I mean, we're getting to a point where we should be.
Exactly.
That's just.
But I also don't see it going up unless the.
No, no, unless we take on a new product, a new.
I think that's what, but, and, and I, I, I think that's the takeaway from, from this discussion.
No, no, I understand, but it's gonna, I'm saying, when you get scale from the cloud. In the private space, the private institution gets the benefit of the backend of lower costs and things like that. I'm just wanna be really clear, we're, we're plateauing where we should be.
Right.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
But I just, I mean, when I hear things like, there's gonna be, you know, um, optimization, things like that, it's not clear to me the municipality is gonna benefit from the optimization.
Not, not directly.
Yeah, I think we're gonna plateau and, and if we do.
We can be a little bit more carbon neutral, we can save a little bit less, you know, in the heating and cooling area.
So I, I, I guess unless there's further discussion about the cost, and would I be looking for is a motion to approve either a one, two, or three year. Of this contract as proposed. Anybody have any other, any other comments that they wanna make or?
I'm good.
Um, yeah, so I will. Move to enter in a service level agreement with Worldband effective seven one twenty-three to six thirty twenty-five, two years. In accordance with Addendum A, the annual cost breakdown of the Worldband agreement.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Appreciate it.
Right. You wanna just email over the two year?
Absolutely.
Your version. Yeah, we'll get it. It's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
All right, so.
Thank you guys.
Number nine, appointing a part-time library assistant at the Mendon Public Library, um, Jane Blackwood, and I just wanna um. Just point out that Jane Blackwood is the current uh, new uh, chairman or president of the Mendon Lions Club. And she came up, came up to myself and uh, Elena, the vice chair and, and Brendan at the uh. You know, at the Senior Citizens Day on Sunday, um, to introduce herself, but because she is the new uh. Head of the organization, it was her first dinner meeting, she had to be two places at once. And she had to be there, but um, and she was, um, she was involved with the, with the uh. With the library before, and I don't know, Andrew, would you like to come up and?
Yeah, so like uh, uh, Mike was saying, um, yeah, so she's the current uh, president of the Mendon Lions Club. Uh, Jane actually um, was a uh, trustee of the Library Board of Trustees from nineteen, uh, since nineteen, two thousand fourteen to two thousand sixteen. Uh, and since then, she's actively participated in library programs like the Adult Book Club and the Nonfiction Book Club. Um, she uh, is currently working at Milford Regional Medical Center. Um, so we believe her years of experience there, as well as her retail experience, she has um, particularly past work as a bookseller. Uh, will make her an excellent fit of the Taft. Um, we're confident she'll be great with patrons. Uh, and that she'll learn the library's cataloging and circulation system and other library processes quickly. Uh, we're excited to have her join us and we recommend her without reservation. If you have questions, I can certainly field any for you.
I like recommendations without reservation.
Uh, I move to appoint Jane Blackwood to the position of part-time library, library assistant for the Mendon Public Library. Ten hours per week at a rate of seventeen fifty per hour.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir.
Excellent.
Congratulations, Jane.
Thank you so much.
Uh, number ten, we're gonna pass over, they've uh, they've changed the route. But they don't need our permission to come through town anymore. but they don't need our permission to come through town anymore.
No, they didn't wanna go up Blackstone too steep.
Maybe. Um, so I guess I would ask Amy, the, the senior center director, to please come up, so we can. Sure. Thanks, Kevin. So we're gonna talk about the senior workup program, right?
If you can just. You, you had asked us to do some, you know, do some statistics for you, and, um, I forwarded those on, I don't know if you've all had a chance to review them. Do you have any questions, or do you like us to speak on that, or?
Just, um, just summarize what you, what you sent over for the.
Okay. I wanna have you speak on your portion, and I'll.
Uh, what I just did was do a matrix of what happens, uh, from the exit, uh, uh, going from the existing situation, of fifteen thousand in overlay at ten dollars an hour, with a thousand dollars per person, um, then moving it up to the, um, fifteen dollars an hour that you discussed two weeks ago, um, which would be actually not affect that much, then going up to fifteen hundred at the same fifteen thousand, then fifteen hundred if you increase it to two thousand, and increase it to twenty-two-five, just to show you some parameters of effects of A, increasing the hourly rate, and then B, if you start increasing the amount of money devoted to it.
And what I sent over was just an analysis of the last eight years, the percentage of individuals that did achieve the full amount, because I think that was your, you know, that, that wasn't your concern, that is a concern. And, um, I feel pretty confident that not every person going into it does come in for that reason, to make the full amount. And, um, so I feel pretty confident that the same amount of people, so the same ten, seven to ten people, will be able to make that full amount then, but will be able to also, you know, accommodate, say, five, six more, that, um, I don't have a, a hard and fast number. Um, I think Jason had basically talked about how once you, once you come up with what, what is gonna be this, um, final amount, we can figure out how we're gonna handle, how we're gonna work with, if we're gonna have a cap on how many people can join or not. And I prefer not to be quite so firm on that, but, um, but it definitely would, I believe the number needs to increase. The fifteen thousand, I don't think, um, is sustainable with these increases. So.
Okay, so the, so the, the, the proposal is to increase the senior workup program minimum wage to fifteen dollars per hour, and raise the ceiling to fifteen hundred per year.
Per, per individual, yes.
Does anybody have any other questions or discussion about that?
So moved.
Second. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
However, are you going to increase the amount of money program, which is fifteen thousand currently in the, from the overlay?
And are we gonna be able to do that?
Are we gonna need in this fiscal year?
No, they're, they're doing the work in this fiscal year, they don't get paid till next, next fiscal year.
So we need to include a, a jump bump in the next budget.
Right, so it'll be the next budget.
By five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you just take note of that.
Right.
Yeah.
Jean, Jean usually sets the overlay, right, and gives us the number?
Just, just, well.
Well, the assessors, the assessors.
Assessors ask for certain amount every year.
Right.
We don't include this number.
Okay.
So, this number goes on top of that. So our, our needs are determined by a variety of factors. It's outstanding taxes not paid, um, the average of exempt, exemptions and payments given during the year. Um, and the GOR kinda guides us in the tax setting process where we need to be. And so, we know what we ask for.
Right, but the, but the issue is that, that piece of it, that piece of it will be, you know, and you wanna make sure you bring that up in the budget and the discussion we have in, into the fall. But right now, this is the piece that we need to do right now, which is the motions that made in second, and so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm myself wondering if, uh, we can use senior workup employees for the digitizing.
Well, yeah, well, actually, they're already doing some of that pre-digitalizing. They're taking the staples out and getting the documents ready for many of the departments, the building department, the town clerk. Yeah, so that's been happening.
Just beware, there are certain documents by state law, and not be seen by outsiders.
Sure.
All the invested applications, for example, are very limited.
Yeah, a lot of our applications for fuel assistance and.
Yeah, I know. But it's interesting that, that the way I see it, a lot of those documents have to be copied or put in somehow, and they could certainly be scanned at the same time.
Yep.
And it's done, you know, as a course of work.
I mean, the Board of Health did a great job a couple of years ago, scanning all the plans.
Right, right.
And I remember they got rid of, like, infile cabinets.
Right.
With this, uh, septic plants coming back ten or fifteen years.
Right.
Now you want, they spit it out.
Right.
I also wanna say thank you very much for those of you that were able to come Sunday. It was a nice event. We're still getting a lot of positive feedback.
Wonderful time.
It was, I'm glad you made it. Yes, it was all of you. Yes, yes. Thank you for your projection. Yeah, it's my pleasure, that was.
Russ and Ann, uh, sure, like, oh, everybody is deserving of it, but.
They were beaming.
But, uh, it was, it was in, um, memorable for them, and it meant a great deal for them personally.
Sure. I could tell you, it's the person who got it the year, the year before.
Yeah, which.
It, it meant an awful lot to, uh, family members that don't know about Mendon. Uh, like, my sister came down, uh, was rarely set foot this down, was just amazed at the amount of work that goes into it, but the amount of people that showed up.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Very good. I still have mine, I still have mine. Thank you so much.
Hey, uh, num- number twelve, and it's actually, uh, zoning enforcement officer and alternate zoning enforcement officer. Just to give you a little bit of background, um, the, the building inspector, uh, by, by statute, is the zoning enforcement officer. Um, but, uh, we can, we can appoint an alternate or an assistant. Um, you know, and, and Dylan Lindholm has been functioning in that capacity. There was some confusion, the previous town administrator, that, that, they had, the, the, uh, alternate was under the impression that she, she had been appointed, or maybe she had been appointed, I guess improperly, for lack of a better word. Um, and just to, to clean it up, uh, John Erickson, as the building inspector, is the zoning enforcement officer. And I, he, he couldn't be here tonight, but I had a discussion with him. And obviously, you know, uh, Dylan is his assistant, and reports him has been functioning in that role. So we're just, just to kinda codify it and, and, uh, make it official that, uh, we would appoint John Erickson as the zoning enforcement officer, and Dylan Lindholm as the, uh, assistant, uh, alternate zoning enforcement officer. So.
Uh, I move to appoint John Erickson as zoning enforcement officer, and Dylan Lindholm as alternate zoning enforcement officer.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Number thirteen, do you wanna, David, I know you were involved in this process. Do you wanna talk about, um, the, uh, Conservation Commission clerk, or perhaps our, um, yeah. Hi Carl, thanks for being patient.
That's okay, I was cutting beans in the, in the, uh, kitchen for most of the meeting.
And, and I didn't mean just tonight, but I know this has been a long process.
So who did we make the offer to, and if they accepted? I never got an email back.
Um, it, it says here, uh, Diane Dearborn, part-time position of conservation clerk, at a rate of eighteen sixty-four per hour for up to fifteen hours a week.
Oh, good, yes. Uh, we interviewed three candidates, and, uh, she was the best fit because of her experience working for another municipality for many years. Uh, she served as the planning board clerk, and in that role, worked with the Conservation Commission, and therefore is familiar with a lot of the DEP paperwork, uh, that's gonna be necessary. Uh, my expectation is that she'll be able to hit the ground running, take over all of preparing the agenda, and, uh, catch up on our backlog of minutes, which haven't been done since January. Uh, and I will no longer have to tell people, uh, the applicants, yes, we don't have a clerk, please prepare the paperwork, and we'll just rubber stamp it, so that we will now have her preparing the stuff that we're supposed to, and making sure that we, we get things filed with the Registry of Deeds in Worcester and DEP, uh, appropriately.
I'm all looks really happy, so.
Well, uh, what, my, now that I have someone to do the administrative stuff, I'm going to be looking to focus more on conservation restrictions in town, working with Medico-Metland Trust, and, uh, taking a look at some of the other enforcement activities that we may need to do. Uh, I met with Leah today, our newest member, she's the person I got the green beans from, in fact. Uh, we're going to be looking at, she's very interested in making sure that the lake treatments, uh, are healthy for the lake, uh, has some ideas about phosphorus fertile, or inorganic, uh, fertilizer to help the quality of life in the run water. Our other new member, Bob Sweet, is your, is, is the rep on the lake task force, and he's going to be meeting with them to talk about lily pads and other issues. So, I'm very happy now that we have a full complement of seven commissioners, and now an, an agent that we're going to be able to work with on the paperwork.
Excellent.
And what about the, the last piece about, um, you know, a, a professional to go out to the, uh, to the site?
Uh, actually, I, I misspoke. We are hiring a clerk. The role of an agent is someone who would be able to give us advice on EPA regulations, Mass Wetlands Protection Act, and knows specifically the Mendon bylaws regarding wetlands. Uh, we, we are allowed to be much more restrictive in certain areas with, uh, intermittent streams, vernal pools than, because the state allows us to, to do that. So, right now, we have several people on the commission who, because they've been serving on the board, and for, on the commission for, for so many years, and because it's their background, they're able to give us some information about that. But, for example, the warehouse project at fifteen Cape Road, I'm going up against professional engineers who their entire life is studying these regulations. And so it was very difficult for us to push back and say, is this correct or not? Because they would just blow us over with paperwork. So, having a agent who is familiar with that law, uh, would allow us to, uh, we, we would look to see, it doesn't make sense for large projects, uh, like the senior center, uh, the, the affordable, affordable housing next to the senior center, or, uh, the new project that Kevin Meem is, is working on. If there are issues there that are related to specific nuances where they're proposing something, we want to find out whether that's reasonable or not. Also going on sidewalks and saying, should the wetlands be flagged here, or should it be flagged fifty feet up that way? So, at some point, we may, uh, come back and say, we would hire, we would look to be retaining someone on a consultant basis, where as needed, we might hire them for four hours in one particular two-week period between meetings, and they would give us information on a specific, uh, project and, and whatnot.
Now, previously, you did have an agent, right, on a part-time basis?
When we hired Emily Petro, she was, uh, technically, uh, competent to do the agent work. She had gone to college and had, uh, specialized in that particular area. Uh, when, uh, there were personality conflicts, and she resigned, we then hired Maya Clark, who was strictly a clerk.
Okay, so I guess my question is, not, not to delve into the past, but just, are you, uh, looking to, um, hire somebody on a part-time basis? Are you just going to hire from a list of qualified vendors, um, to represent the town when the need arises?
What I expect is when we come to our next project, where we need someone with that level of expertise, at that point, we'll have a specific case, and at that point, we can, uh, advertise. I'd work with our HR team and say, are you, do you have the qualifications and, uh, the background? There is no state certification for being a conservation agent. There are a number of, uh, credentials and classes and whatnot you can take. And I expect that the people on the Conservation Board who know the law now would be able to participate in those interviewing processes, and make sure that we had someone who would be able to, um, to, to represent the town. This is an intermediate step between relying on the volunteer members of the CONCOM and the full-blown requiring an external peer review that is paid for by the applicant with all of the extra overhead that that's involving.
Mike, you have a comment? Carl, I have just a question. It sounds like for the agent role, you're approaching it more on a project or a contract basis. As needed, you wanna bring resources on?
Yes, we do not need an agent for most sidewalks, but specifically, I can look ahead to those two large projects. If another developer comes in and wants to do, uh, one of those reduced lot size and then open space over here, it would have been very helpful if we had someone very knowledgeable at the law. We've learned some hard lessons from those previous, uh, developments. Uh, and the expectation is, we would arrange to hire them for a specific number of hours to work on that project. They would attend sidewalks, they would write up a report, and we would decide whether we needed them to come in and, and participate in the other meetings. There are other small towns in, in central western Massachusetts that follow this model. They have a clerk at a lower rate, uh, like the one we just hired, who does the clerical activity, and then they have a much more experienced master's degree level agent who, uh, provides specific targeted advice on projects.
Do, do you have any, any projects going on right now that you need somebody like that?
No.
So the ones that, that's, you're already past that stage, and the ones that are.
Yeah, the warehouse project, yeah, the warehouse project, we, the Board of Health signed off. We, we, we signed off on the order of conditions. My understanding is that construction will start after sometime next year. At that time, we may want to retain someone specifically who goes out and does expressions. Uh, the Misco Springs Development Project on North Bridge Road, we specifically have a situation where we have someone going out on a regular basis and providing documentation that, uh, the very substantial order of conditions that was worked up ten years ago is still, uh, that, they, they have appropriate erosion control, uh, that they're, because Misco Hill Springs, there was a lot of water there, and a lot of very fancy lots, uh, that they're squishing in there. So, we may want to do something similar, we'll see. One of the things the new clerk would be able to do is interface between us and the Board of Health and the Planning Board. When they actually start construction on Cape Road, there's gonna be a lot of people wanting to watch what they're doing. We would specifically be looking to make sure that the siltation barriers and other, uh, work to protect the wetlands in the, in the western part of the site, and in the north and the south were adequately dealt. And then there's the whole thing about, is there a significant amount of water, stormwater runoff from the soccer field, the, uh, the church, the other parcels on Cape Road, and the solar farms? Are they sweeping through Cape Road? And then we would work with the, the, the property owner and the town, uh, to see whether that's something that an agent might be able to help out with.
And I guess my question was, I, I just wanna be sure, and you have a, you have a bench, so to speak, you have a list of people that you can call on when you need them.
We interviewed one person who was much more suited to the agent job than the clerk job. Uh, what would happen is when we get closer to having a, a project, we would put out another call specifically for the agent job. We would have people on the committee who would be able to grill her on knowledge of those regulations and bylaws.
Right.
That's, that's, that's my role as chair. I don't have to know everything. I know how to run meetings and, and, and get, establish a consensus. There are other people who are able to ask very piercing questions to applicants about.
Carl, I resemble that remark, right?
Two things come to mind. One, I think there's gotta be a professional services line item either within, uh, within the budget somewhere to kinda support that type of project-based, uh, contract. So I don't know if the CONCOM has a professional services lineup to support Carl's model, or whether we need to create one, or.
Well, that's, where, that's, that's an action item that is.
The second thing is, this feels a little bit like, um, the Housing Coordinator, the CMRPC, I don't know if that's the right group, but for small towns like ours.
Well, Jack, well, well.
Ten, twenty hours.
Yeah.
Check. If, if you use CMRPC for specific projects, you get by being a member. Well, I'm just gonna, they, they, they're, they're focusing on developing regionalized, specialized resources.
Yeah, but they.
For small communities. I didn't know if there's a program underway that we may not be aware of that we should tap into.
Yeah, well, as a planner, Jack, Jack and and the planner would would fill that that role. And I know he interfaces with with planning and Concom and.
One of the duties of the new clerk will be to prepare the budget for next year. And I will work with you and her and say, should there be, in addition to a straight clerical line item, should there be a second line item for this kind of professional services?
Yeah, it could be.
Could be, could be.
So so when's her official start date?
I think we think about.
Yeah.
So I move to appoint Diane Dearborn to the part time position of Conservation Clerk at a rate of eighteen sixty-four per hour, up to fifteen hours per week.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So she's appointed and.
Congrats, Carl. Bless Diane.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, number fourteen, we have a request by the Mendon Upton Education Foundation, request approval to place signs in certain locations uh, here in Mendon at the intersection of sixteen and North Ave, intersection of Route one forty and Greenhouse Pub. Uh, up in Imperial Gaswood Plaza, uh, the small grassy intersection there and um, is Gina Girardi on? Great. Oh, you're muted.
Top right.
We're checking on our end to see.
That she's unmuted.
Can you can you check and see if you um, chose the right, the right uh, microphone? It should be a click.
She's not muted in Teams. It may be on her end.
Right. If you're on Teams in the top right, there should be a place for you to choose your uh, choose your devices. Well, the point is.
Hello, can you hear me now? Okay, I got, I'm so sorry. I actually use, I have laryngitis, eh? But I use Teams at work all the time, so I'm familiar with Teams. I'm like, all right, anyway. But um, excuse my voice, but thank you for entertaining our application for signs in Mendon for the spooky run coming up in October. October twenty ninth. So we are, this is, well, this is the sixth annual. We did pause uh, during the pandemic. But we have a new board and we are, we are in to go, and we will be having a spooky run October twenty ninth. Um, it's a Sunday before Halloween. And we're hoping we're going to be putting signs hopefully in Upton as well and in Mendon. And you are all welcome to come, please, in your costumes and run and trot, walk, roll, however you would like to, to raise some monies for the Education Foundation.
I mean, I I think the board is certainly inclined to approve this.
Great.
I'm just waiting for her to, yeah, for for to mute you for a minute so that it's not feeding back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My 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 issue is I just wanted to comment that um, apparently we have two um, sign bylaws. And they conflict. Um, and one of the issues, I I personally, one of my pet peeves are all kinds of signs um, that are, you know, spit out plastic that have everything from from solar to everything else that are um, I don't know if I want to use the word littering, but littering um, all over the place. Um, and certainly this is a, this, this is a good reason to have one. I would just ask um, if if it's approved, that you just make sure that the day after this is over, um, they all get removed promptly. Right?
Took the words out of my mouth.
Oh, good. Right?
Yeah, the cleanup is important. I think we often do it when we run for office here, and it's important that we go around and pick up after ourselves. It doesn't always happen. So not not that it's not that it's your fault, but it, you know.
But there are great, but the issue is there are great many signs that just appear. Commercial signs that people just stick on corners and different places. And it's one thing if it's on their personal property, but in public spaces, they just kind of plant them. And and they need to be removed, you know?
Thank you as well for doing this the proper way.
But, right. So I guess I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the request by Mendon Upton Education Foundation to place signs at the intersection of Route sixteen and North Ave, intersection of Route one forty and Greenhouse Pub, Imperial Gaswood Plaza, small grassy area intersection.
Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Have a great night. You're welcome.
You're muted again, sorry. Oh, you're still, still muted.
Am I still?
Now you know.
Okay, is there a window that we're, we should keep to, like of time, like how?
What's the date?
It's October twenty ninth.
Then October thirtieth, it should be removed.
But why can we, why can we put them out?
Um, usually, I I would say October first.
Okay, great. Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful night.
You too.
You too. Number fifteen, we have Francis Tatro. Oh, she's, she said she made the request, but she's unable to attend the meeting. This is a similar request for Our Lady of the Valley. Twelve by eighteen inch lawn signs um, at Maple Street. Um, or the intersection of Main and Route sixteen. Um, and it's to sign to promote the O L V Trick or Trot five K.
Um, is this the same spot Route sixteen and North Ave versus the?
Well, she said, they said one or the other. That's what she's saying, so. So I guess we would probably want to pick, pick one or the other and uh, and just, I I think we need to put dates. I just, I I don't know, do we put in the application? What, what, did she put in the application? Is it in there? This is number fifteen. Let's see, well, it's, I've got it, I've got it. Yes. Let's see, on her, on her email.
Awesome. Since we just moved to do North Ave, I guess we could say maybe. I think it's the same month.
She said it's actually on, it's actually on October twenty first. So I would look, look for a motion that um, you know, that that we would allow them to put it out um, on or after September twenty first uh, to be removed um, by uh, October twenty, October twenty second, so she had, they could have it up for a month. So it would be, so it would be the the sign they requested um, at Main and Route sixteen to be placed on September twenty first and removed um, October.
That's going to invent that to Maple and sixteen.
Um, whatever, whichever you.
So that it's the opposite of the other one.
Sure. So we'll tell her Maple and sixteen, so so the motion is uh, the O L V sign placed at Maple and sixteen um, on, let's say, September twenty second to be removed October twenty second. So, maybe a second?
I guess I'll second that one now.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. See sixteen, um, you you might recall that we've been talking actually for quite a while now about surplus vehicles. And there are two of them on the uh, at, there are actually three that have been identified at um, the Highway Department. One of them is a, we're still trying to figure out who actually has jurisdiction. Um, it's a surplus military ambulance. And um, no one wants to take ownership. Um, I've, we we have talked to the National Guard, talked to the Governor's Office, uh, we've talked to Homeland Security. Uh, we talked to the, um, I think we even talked possibly to an army recruiter. Um, but we're trying to fit, nobody's against it, but nobody can actually give permission. So. And and the issue is, you know, we know, we we have it, it actually says US government property. So. But beyond that, you know, we have these two, um, it's a nineteen ninety-three International two hundred S E R. Uh, last six of the VIN uh, is uh, four eight three nine eight one. And uh, nineteen ninety-three Ford Ford F one fifty. Um, again, same thing, last six of the VIN A eight seven four five three. Um. So. So basically, what we need to do is vote to declare these two trucks from the Highway Department as surplus and permission to dispose of said trucks in accordance with um, thirty B, which is the state procurement law. And then the interim and dispose of them in the. Well, it would, under the, under the procurement law, we can, there are, right, there are, there are organizations or companies that we can, that will actually put it to auction for us. So in the Highway Department will take care of it. We just need to declare them a surplus.
I remember Alan came last year, and I think the action at the time was to get the VIN so that the things could be in the motion, if I recall correctly. So it sounds like we got that.
Yeah, that's what, right. So I can, and why don't I, again, it's a nineteen ninety-three International two hundred S E R. Then is one H T G B N two R eight P H four eight three nine eight one. And a nineteen ninety-three Ford F one fifty, VIN is one F T D F one five N nine P N A eight seven four five three. And I would look, be looking for a motion to declare them both as surplus vehicles and give the Highway Department permission to uh, dispose of said vehicles under the procurement law thirty B.
I move to declare two trucks from the Highway Department as surplus and for permission to dispose of said trucks previously mentioned in accordance with thirty B state procurement law.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Space.
All right, do we want to talk about these goals, or do we want to take the town administrator report? First. Yeah, all right, let's, let's try to tackle this spreadsheet. Um, I also know, I think, I think, Jody, is that, is that part of why you came here to talk about the DLS study or?
It's just being honest.
Okay, all right.
So when, when were we having Jody talk to, is that the next meeting?
Did you want to talk, did you say the first one in October? Okay, all right, just so we get it on there, okay. So I guess I would open the floor for anybody that would like to to discuss. I have, I still have a a a call out to um, to Zach Lake, the uh, the the actual author of the, or the, that headed up the DLS study that wrote us the report. And he and I have missed each other in emails, um, trying to discuss the questions that are outstanding. But, you know, we've, we've gone back and forth for a while, so I asked Brendan, I know Brendan, you and Mike had worked on this, and this is kind of a a merger of of a, so if one of you want to walk us through it, just as a starting point.
So, okay. So there's a few things that that led to the creation of this document. So uh, a DLS study, you know, serves as the basis for my sheet tool. I basically took all the recommendations from the DLS study, color coded them, uh, assigned them a short meeting and a long term and some approximate categories such as a reorganization required or sort of things like that. Um, and then Mike took um, additional sources of information such as the ma- master plan and feedback from other boards and kind of merged these together. So this is not an exhaustive list, but it's a fairly comprehensive list of all the things that need to be happening in the next three or four years. So I I think it's a difficult thing to to go through and, you know, line by line and to talk about it. But um, all of these things are important uh, and need to be, you know, addressed at some point. Mr. Rudden.
I know that, oh. I I know that um, I had received a message from the Planning Board Chair, Bill Ambrosino. So I reached out to him um, about the master plan, and he had provided all of us copies, executive study summary. And and again, this, this was a couple of days ago. He said attached is the executive summary for the master plan. Um, it's in the works. He put the finishing touches on it. He's sent a link to the whole board. And uh, he says the members of the planning board have had ample time to review. He'll be looking to approve it at tonight's planning board meeting, which I think was.
That was Monday.
Monday night.
And they did, I.
They did.
Get approved it. So we're a, another step in the road, down the road.
So um, there was an email also, I believe, from um, sorry, uh, Mike Ambrosino about the um, there was, they're getting a grant to review the bylaws.
Right, yeah, Bill Ambrosino had talked about, there's a grant through through CMRPC. Uh, with Central Massachusetts Regional Planning, right? Uh, that they would do is is review the bylaws and and to his credit, Bill, a couple of times had put together study committees to do it. And um, it kind of got bogged down at town meetings as things tend to happen. Um, but, you know, having that professional um, assistance, I think will go a long way towards um, tightening things up and getting us in the right direction. But, so we're we're looking at this, um, we're talking about FY twenty four. What?
Question, David, what?
You want to come up to the table, Kevin?
I don't know what you're looking at, but the item on the uh, discussion talked about the DLS study. I just want to remind you that anything related to hiring an assessor, changing his or her duties, pay grade appointment, rest solely with the Board of Assessors by state law.
I think that's open to interpretation.
No, it's not. Uh, we have definitive rulings from the D O R over a twenty-five year period about that. And I'll challenge anybody to on that.
Well, nobody's, nobody's challenging you at that right now, but there's other, there's certainly our our court cases and other issues. And even a member of your board talked about um, you know, the the reporting structure. Certainly, the Board of Assessors are elected officials, and thereby statute, there are um, duties and responsibilities that the Board of Assessors holds.
That's true.
Right, and I don't think anybody's questioning that.
And I won't comment on what another board member might have said. That's their personal opinion. But I'm representing the full board and just conveying what state law and and uh, the D O R has told us over and over again. And I will tell you that two of our three members of the board personally challenged some of the statements in that report. And we're told by the division head of the DLS, Christopher Wilcock, that it was not the scenario recommended, it was a scenario. And I know with the last meeting. He will, he will not. They don't put things in writing. I will be seeing him tomorrow.
Well, they did, well, they did put a study, they did put recommendations in writing because they gave it to us.
And I will tell you that is boilerplate that they are passing out in every city town across the state. And the State Association of Assessing Officers has challenged several pieces of that across the state. But I don't want to get in an argument over who does what.
Oh, we're not.
I, because.
Right.
When it comes time, um, when the current assessor decides to retire, I know that as a a board member, I'm more than willing to work with everybody on issues. But statutorily, we pick the next assessment. That doesn't change.
Well, I think the assessors are elected, right?
Whether we're elected or appointed, that is the law.
Right, but so the elected assessors, when you talk about appoint, you mean? Who are you talking, I thought the assessors were elected.
Some are, some in other cities and towns.
But in this town, they're elected, right?
They are elected, yes.
Right, so the townspeople pick the assessors.
Right.
Right.
Stating out the parameters because you have a lot of new people here and you might not realize.
I, I mean, I would say when you look at the D L S study, there are a lot of things that require. Chat charters, town meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of things on here.
Right.
That are gonna, that aren't necessarily under, who'd be under our purview to possibly recommend, but we don't make the decisions, not just the, the assessors which you're referring to, so. I, I mean, I, I hear you, and if that turns out to be an objective for this fiscal year. We have a conversation, but right now we haven't even figured out which of the, we think we can tackle this fiscal year.
Right, and, and the rest of the, the rest of the story is that I, I think it's important to point out that, that document is a starting point.
Yes.
It's not definitive by any means and it's recommendations. And we would look and, and we will rely heavily on the elected Board of Assessors to advise the town. How to proceed, just like we'll have, we have other professionals both appointed, elected and who are. Employees of the town that we'll look for to, for that input.
Two of the three board members were interviewed extensively for that report, so I mean, I have no problem with the. It's conclusion, I just want to make sure that newer people understand there is a separation of church and state there.
Yeah.
And I, I will tell you that my own personal perspective. As a board member is when it comes to a time that the current assessor retires, which is what they reference. I'm more than willing to work with the town on getting the right person and slotting them in in the right pay structure and all that. But ultimately, the appointment authorities with the elected board. Thank you, got this point.
Thanks, sure. All right, do we want, is there any other discussion that we want to have about this document?
I just want to have a quick, I don't want to drag it down, I just want to have a quick discussion about one item, which is.
Sure.
How to buy T A and bylaw. You know, like, that's, so this is why it's hot on my mind, I just had an interview with the Collins Institute and I was kind of. Talking through that with him and. And our timeline is pushed out like two years past when we were trying to hire this person, and I don't know what that means, like. I think that's something we should start with.
Timeline here?
Yeah.
Okay, so real quick, that's just, oh, that just, no, that is, that is one person's opinion of which fiscal year we're going to tackle some of these things.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's purely, all, all of these are just. I, I think. Personal. Again, this is a, my two cents, this is a, this is a, this document, again, all this, you know, is, is a beginning point and I think. Right, and the, well, the suggestion, suggestion was, and I think, I think it is important that. You know, we define. The, the duties of the town administrator, the duties and responsibilities, right? And the idea of, you know, creating a town charter and a town manager, my personal opinion, I don't think the town is there yet. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's something that the town people are interested, however, I do think it would be important. For us to use some professional guidance like the Collins Center, which is part of the reason I wanted to go with them, to codify a. You know, a, a job description. And very specifically provide, you know, list what, what the duties are. You know, and, and, you know, re. Re-verify exactly where they fit in the structure with every, all the other employees in town. And I, I think it would be a good idea to, to put it in a bylaw. So that we have the townspeople understand, you know, this is, the town administrator, it isn't an optional role, it's a necessary role. And it has certain responsibilities and certain job description, and I think most importantly, that. There are metrics in there that we, that the, that the board, that the select board. As the hiring, appointing authority can actually do a yearly. Performance review.
Yeah, for me, it feels like one of the more important things we could do this year.
I agree, and that's why, and that's actually part of, I had the same conversation, I had a similar conversation.
Yeah, and, and the, I just watched, Collins Institute, if you ever listen to this video, man, those guys are so great to talk to. They're just so smart, but yeah.
Lots of experience.
Lots of experience.
Right.
I, I mean, I, I think when you look at this document, all the columns are just another way or a decision criteria you potentially could use in.
Yes, another way to put it on.
I think what we haven't done is actually talked about it to see if what was put out there for, for, as an example, makes sense. Right, so for instance, codifying the T A, I would not put an F Y twenty-four. Because we've got to hire a T A, we're going to identify the job description, but do I think that's something we need to do because it's actually going to be very clear as to. Roles, responsibility, reporting lines to allow a T A to do the job that's effectively as possible? Absolutely, do I think I can do that in F Y, we can do that in F Y twenty-four? No.
Right.
That's why I said.
No, but, 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 but at the same time, I, I think. We actually are working in that direction because we've got a professional. Company that is actually going to, part of the process right now is defining the duties and the job description. So we're going down, we are going down that road.
Like, so when that job description comes in and we read that into the official. Job descriptions of the town, like, how do we make that?
Unless it conflicts with standing.
Yeah, what, well, to answer your question, the way I would, I would look at that and I'd look at it for, for Dave's input, but the issue would be to me. When we write the contract. For that.
By reference.
Right. Yeah, we would, we would actually have a, a job description and duties that would be in the contract.
And that's what we could refer back to.
Correct, and that's a starting point.
Can we clarify all the personnel policies?
Yes, and definitely clarify the personnel.
Right.
So to me, to me, the, this is a list of all the kind of stuff people want to see get done, right?
So your question would be, is there anything missing?
No, 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 because I think there's more here than we could shake a stick at, but for this fiscal year. What are the critical things we think, the what, not the how, so we've gone into the how last time, not the how, but what are the things we think are a priority to? Tackle this fiscal year versus next fiscal.
And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna say, say what I talked about, I, I think a couple of weeks ago, is I had asked specifically the, you know, the. Highway, that was the different, the different departments that the Collins Center pulled into in their presentation. As well as the finance director and the, and the town, the, the acting town administrator with their suggestions, I think that's the. So, that's exigent, so, you know, we're looking at them to, to, to talk to us at, you know, in the next couple of meetings.
One thing I'd say to that is that was getting into the how, like, what needs to be done, but the. Concept of consolidating highway parks, et cetera, is that a. Strategic objective this board feels we need to pursue, if the answer is yes. Then we step into the how and how do we start to get the groundswell underneath that, right? So I see a distinction between the what and the how, and I just want to kind of make that clear, so.
Yeah.
Or least financial reviews is an example, it would be, do we think we should have them, the, the what? If we say yes, then I would look to our Director of Finance to say, what does that start to look like? Right, and the ask would be to come, come, come to the board at the end of a, not this quarter, a quarter. With, with an example of what you would recommend, and if we had question, we'd iterate through that, maybe the next quarter would change a little bit, but the idea to me is. What, what are the three to five things on this list? Given that we're already a quarter into the fiscal year, we think we need to focus on, get some momentum on it, right?
And I think, and again, I think the, the first step is to, to have the professionals that are doing the jobs now come to us and tell us where they're at. And I think that's going to direct us.
We have like a. Department head.
Like a workshop?
Workshop, yeah, I'm just like, I do this at work all the time.
Yeah, no, I agree, we've talked about it a couple of times.
You know, all the other stuff goes away, this is what we're going to focus on.
It seems really palatable to me, it seems like I can come up with that, come back next time and be like, here's my three to five.
Oh, like.
I don't.
Yeah, and some of them are going to be like low hanging fruit that we don't have to make a lot of changes to make, some of them are big overarching projects that are going to take a lot of work. So if you look at this list, the D L S study, there's a lot of day to day. You would expect it to happen that we could actually take off the list and say, make it happen, it's like.
Some of this team meetings, right? Why don't we, why don't we? Not next week, but three weeks from now. Pick a, pick the, the Wednesday night or pick a night to have a workshop meeting specifically about this. So not next week.
Right.
Not in two weeks, but in three weeks, so basically on the off week.
Well, in two weeks, we're actually going to have an update, I think, right, first meeting in October. And that'd actually be a good time to use that, to have people see what comes before us with it. Jody walked away and said, we're thinking. It was capital planning and, you know, framework to get that done, you're going to come before us and say, this is, these are my thoughts, right? It'd be a good example for other people to see that, if you're looking for highway or parks to step away on any of these recommendations, would it be helpful to see what's a framework might?
Well, they're already, they're already working on it.
Actually.
They've already, that's already in process, when are we going to see an update on that then?
We're still talking about the organizational part of it in terms of what pieces fit together. How we afford what's being presented. And we're not quite at that point, but probably mid-October, I would say that we'll. Instead, if it's, if it requires additional funds, it's going to be an article on town meeting. So this, this, a whole bunch of moving pieces there that we are actually had two meetings on it.
Well, the. We ju, we voted to, to close the, you know, submission of articles on October eleventh, so it's going to, if you're going to put an article on a special in the fall, it's going to be in by October eleventh.
Yeah. I would think that would be annual though.
Well, it, it could be.
We've also discussed that too, that, you know, we did, we haven't said that this.
I know, I just.
The exact time that we should be implementing this, but because the, the concern we had when we discussed it is. This is my viewpoint with two of my department heads. And the next person comes in six weeks or eight weeks after that's adopted and says. Who thought of this knuckleheaded idea? And, you know, you were, you're backtracking, so it, it potentially is an annual town meeting.
But I think. To your point. But, but, but what we're, what we're trying to do is provide some direction, but I, I want, I'd like some input and then provide some direction. So that, you know, the whole idea is when we do get a, a T A in here, we can actually give them us some direction. And avoid rework. Yes.
Are, are we also expected to hear from the planning board sort of like at this meeting, I think, when.
Well, that's.
Said, well, so I mean, I don't, are, are they going to do a presentation about master plan to us?
Well, that's, that's, well, that's what that. The short answer is, that's what that is, that's what that, that executive summary is.
Right.
And, and I asked them, and it, it was, the, the short answer is yes, that.
But I mean, well, they, but I mean, in the meeting, the open meeting forum, are they going? To present to us recommendations for the goal setting, for example.
Yes, he had, he had sent me an earlier email to me, or maybe it was to the whole board, saying that. They were, they were in the process, I, I had personally sent him an email chair to chair.
Right.
Looking for that, and he answered me back that it was in the process, and then a little bit later, he sent that one to the whole board.
I guess I'm asking more, a more specific question, which is, are we going to get? That sort of as part of our setting of the goals and sort of.
I've asked.
That fit into the timeline.
Yes, I, I, I don't know, I've, I've, I've asked him.
Okay.
To, not so much as the planning board chair, but as the, as the master plan committee person to. Make a presentation to us, just like I asked, how the department has to do the same thing.
Can I make a suggestion though, because I think there's a lot of things on this list that are certainly just under our purview. Right, so we think about our goals and objectives, not necessarily the town and the strategy. Do we focus on what we have, like, a capital plan, I happen to know a capital plan is also in the master plan. But there are certain things that, I mean, we're, we're talking about. Foundational things we need to kind of. Get in place in order to execute any of these broader things that the master plan is suggesting, right? So I'm just wanting, just for the sake of progress, do we start to focus on the critical few things we know we have. Purview over.
Right.
And drive those ahead if we think of the foundational for this fiscal year, so that when the T A comes in and possibly that, that, that. Not the, not the director, what, what, the, the high, the D P W possibly. Superintendent, superintendent. When those folks come on, there's once to, to, to the chair's point, there's a foundation, a place of things, framework that we're thinking of implementing and some things you probably will already implemented. Because in the finance space, that goes as far as we can take it as quickly as we can take it, right?
So I'm, I'm suggesting that our next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting would be the fourth. I'd like to schedule Wednesday, the eleventh in the conference room for a workshop. Specifically about what we're discussing right here.
Uh, what time?
Do you want to do six thirty or six or seven or?
Six thirty is good, just because it's the, the usual time.
Okay.
In the meantime, everyone, this is on their point, so we all have access to this.
Right.
Want to review it and say anything missing? That you personally think should be on here.
I guess.
But, but I think the go, the goal is to Mike, to Mike Goddard's point. And maybe to everybody's point, what, what I, what I'd like to accomplish at that meeting is to have everybody come with their. Suggestion of, of what, what within all of this is, is our purview as a board. Of the things upfront that we need to suggest. To move forward. Okay. Anything else on this matter?
All right, well, I, I'm sort of wondering about like. Dependencies of some of these, like, so just a consideration that, you know. I'm not sure that. They're clearly reflected, at least the way I'm seeing, so like, maybe, maybe they're in here, but I think that would be just something else to consider is, you know.
Yeah.
Some of these seem dependent on other goals.
A dependency goal? But no, but don't you think that we're doing a workshop, what things we'll do is we'll like, where do we identify the dependencies?
That's what I'm.
It's a consider, it's a consideration as we're preparing for.
That's exactly on point, and that's what this, this meeting is going to do, is for us to get, to create some clarity. It, it kind of do some collaborative work to create some clarity of exactly the starting point for us to boil all of this down and, and pick some action items.
Yeah, I feel like I want to have like a, like a flow chart, like, you know, multi-dimensional thing, break free from the columns, but.
Well, that's, I, I, I think, you know, that's why, that's why I.
I mean, I can bring in some Collab tools like Miro or something and we could do a digital train.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with a, a, an easel and a marker.
Yes, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like a murder board, can we do like a murder?
Sure, throw a murder, murder board.
But we're, we're on the same page, so it's going to be, it's going to be October eleventh, that's the, that's the day, and that's, that's what we're going to do. Right, is, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then let's, um, let's have your report.
Okay. Uh, I just got a bunch of little things, I just wanted to update the board. We did get an invitation to begin negotiations with the police back, probably late July, early August. We did forward it off to Attorney McCarroll.
Yes, I had, I had, was approached by the chief of police and, and Labor Counsel, Mike McCarroll, and they have been. Processing, you know, beginning the process.
Yeah, today or yesterday, I can remember, they're blending into each other. We did get a, a letter from the town hall employee union expressing the same interests and beginning the negotiations. So I think it, it would be who was at this point to start thinking about. You know, the structure we're going to use in terms of negotiation, developing bargaining points, the ground rules are pretty self set, you know, both sides know. And, and how we're going to approach this, given that, you know, my time here, do you want me involved in that? And then potentially having to transition.
This type of.
Well, this, their contract is.
Like laughs, so it's a long time.
Yeah, so next June.
Yeah, it's next June, that's when it's up, and, and Labor Council is aware of it.
So.
And I did mention that, he, he, he's the one that pointed out to me that, you know, all of the unions are in that, so he's already beginning that.
And what's the duration of the contract that you use?
Three years.
I mean, I, yeah, I wonder about, you know, we're going to have a new town administrator starting sometime early, like, it, it, I don't, it, it seems like that might be. It might be good to have the groundwork laid or the person is starting.
Start, you can start without negotiating.
Right.
You know, and that would involve setting up ground rules, having an initial meeting. The, the ground rules might be, you know, you, you know, you introduce your points. The, the ground rules might be, you know, you, you know, you introduce your points up to X amount of points. Uh, after the third meeting, no new things can be on the table. You know, nobody goes to the press, that kind of thing, and then begin at least hearing out. And maybe having, you know, mine is saying previously was. The former town administrator and town council, maybe having myself a member of the board. And town council involved in that process, and that way, at least it's being carried on in such a way that, you know, it'll continue with the new town.
Why don't we plan for a next meeting in two weeks on October fourth to have an executive session? To discuss, to discuss bargaining. And then we'll bring us the recommendations, I have some thoughts about how we, how we start the process, and everybody. So acceptable?
And now, obviously you rely upon your sources, you know, for example, Legion, the police chief.
Yeah.
Ask him specifically, you know, what in the contract works, what doesn't work, what are other communities doing that we should be doing? And those all form our bargaining points to lay on the table. And the same thing with the town hall employees. Uh, the water filtration system, the application is into DEP. They have ninety days preview, we're hoping that they're gonna speed it up, but there's no guarantees on that, but once we have the application approved, we could actually install the. Water filtration.
Amazing, that's, and then we can drink the water, okay.
Yeah, so that's, we're hoping, and I'm not sure if they have to come back and check this filtration system, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's been so long, it would be nice to have the.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have some of this, uh, campus project, uh, they're finalizing it, pretty much everything is done. I'm looking for them to do one more hydro seeding, because I don't like the weeds, they gotta do some kind of weed control. And ha- and do some kind of hydro seeding now, so.
Their, their contract says it's guaranteed in there, that, that, what they told me was that they were seeded it with the idea that it would. Hold everything in place.
Yeah.
So there's no additional cost, and then they're gonna, and part of, part of what we've already paid is it's guaranteed they're gonna come back and do it in the spring.
Oh, alright.
So, but, but that was the meeting, one of the meetings you weren't at.
Oh.
Where the, but what, cause I brought that same point up.
Yeah, cause I don't like the weeds.
No.
I think that was discussed in a select.
Yeah, yeah, and and the, and the, and.
No, I'm not a yacht guy, so.
Right, but the issue is that they were doing it ro- even though we're, you know, even though it was the wrong time, when it was much hotter. It was to hold everything in place, and it's a good thing they did because of the rain. It was to hold everything, yeah, so, so that's in the contract.
You still need to get rid of those three poles and national groups taking the time to do that, so, and and there's no move on that. You know, you, you, you used to think, well, you could just, they don't even care, so.
Right.
Whenever they get to it, they get to it, um, Mass Historical Grant, we had a Zoom meeting with Mass Historical yesterday. We've fallen a little bit behind on that, because of certain things that were beyond our control. Uh, we're trying to pull that back into focus, uh, we do, we did get a whole bunch of recommendations. Uh, from them regarding how we uh, develop the uh, the bid documents in terms of specifications.
It's about the record room, or?
This is the record, yes, um, in that fact that uh, the architect didn't contemplate that. There was gonna be filed sub bids, and those are all DTM regulated, so they have to qualify bidders, and you're gonna hire a general contractor. The general contractor is gonna, you know, send it out to the sub bidders.
Yep.
And then the general contractor picks the people who he wants to do the job. And there's a, there's a timeline on that, and the goal is. To get everything, you know, to have a general contractor online, and the things we can do before it becomes winter, we'll do. And then the thing for Mark, we'll look at Mark as a starter's date, and we'll carry it forward, it has to be done by June thirtieth. It's a small piece of a big project, uh, it's my understanding, we have sixty-five thousand from. The uh, Mass Historical Commission, they're gonna put restrictions on the building, and you know, all of a sudden, you're not gonna be able to just take the windows out. Putting the screens and things like that, but uh, we also have an additional sum of money to do a bathroom. And all of that, so we wanna do it all as one project, that, that, that was the thought, and just get it out there.
They were able to get the money for the bathroom, I thought originally. Okay.
They gave, they gave, and my, the numbers, I think it was like one fifteen, and we ended up with about one seventy total through the, for the project. So we're working on that, hopefully everything will gel and it'll fall together. See, the mire, uh, we have a schedule of uh, vehicles that I didn't have time to do, Laura's gonna take that over as well, a couple of applications that need to be filed. You know, thank God Laura's back, uh, the earmark um, that we. Uh, got for hundred thousand dollars from the ETS, oh, you got it, you have to sign, that's, so. So we're sending all that documentation back, we need uh, Jack, there's a section that he has to complete, and there's. More of a narrative in terms of what we're gonna try to do with the money.
We had a, we had a meeting um, with the uh, the company about the, about uh, water, water and sewer. And there's a couple of, uh, there's, there's still, you know, two commercial sites and two residential sites, private sites. Um, I'm actually going to reach out, cause I know, I know one of the parties fairly well, the other one, I don't, but I'm gonna reach out to them. Um, but the, the discussion was to thoroughly, you know, exhaust and deal with the, the two sites the town owns first.
We don't, yes, it's like the drilling to see what the flows are.
Right, yeah, I guess, right.
Um, department head meeting next Monday, it's gonna be the first one.
Awesome.
Have it up here, I'm gonna get coffee and donuts, and we're gonna have an agenda, I've been working with Jody and. Uh, developing some, you know, bullet points and different things we wanna talk about. Um, and it's just gonna, not, an opportunity to get people sitting around a table talking. Do a roundtable kind of discussion with everybody, saying what's going on to the top, and the reviews, like you wanna hear. That kind of thing, but we will have two or three agenda items probably related to, one specifically related to the capital budgeting. In terms of how we're gonna approach that and the ideas in terms of inventory and in the forms and all of that, um. So, you know, we're, we're making a move for it, it was something that was long overdue, I usually, in every town I've worked in, I've. Done it every four to six weeks, and, and it, some of them are real structured, you know, come around budget time, we're talking about the budget. But others are more free flowing kind of things, that just get people talking. Uh, boilers and the air exchangers, I've talked to Ray Go- Go. And he is, he said he was gonna get back to me this weekend, I got an email from him, we're gonna be calling, and that's something we need to get done before winter, because we. I guess one of the two boilers is working, and the air exchange system is not working at all, so that's gonna be done.
In the same place that we were in.
I, yeah, I know, it's, yeah.
Right. And and if, the issue about it's not working, um, it's not, one is, one is feeding through the other, and it has been. Designed, and I, I met with him personally, and. There's different, different zones and different areas, he was trying to sort out which area worked and which, but the conversation was this, this gotta get. We don't need to talk about it anymore, we need to fix it.
Yeah, the building needs to be heated in.
Yeah, correct, and efficiently. Right.
Uh, I'm also gonna do a memo to the town hall employees, uh, that basically says that we don't want. The employees parking over here on the side of the building, in the three spaces over here because of the drop bars. Uh, we wanna, you know, those spaces are gonna be specifically reserved for our customers. And, you know, I'm hoping people will park either on the main section or the, up towards the back. Just to let you know if you have some problems. I met with uh, Joyce Gilmore. Um, she called me and expressed a concern about her property relative to the DOT slash uh, project that the. So the succeed project, and the takings on her property, I walked to property with her, and I, and I can. Understand her concerns about that, and she would like to have them come down and, and, you know, see. What it is that they're doing, so they could visualize it themselves, and I'm gonna extend the invitation to them to try to get them. Down here to take a look at that, and to c- consider that a whole one-way thing, I'm hearing lots of things about the one-way being. Something that may or may not be good, I don't, you know, I'm not a, I'm not.
Or about that general area is just pretty bad, Emerson and Maple, that, and Washington, that intersection areas.
I mean, there's been talk about setting it up so that, um, you know, you, you come to the top Maple Street. And you basically have to tip right turn only.
Right.
You know, there's no left turn.
That would stop a lot of.
Right, right turn only, so you. You know.
Joyce's property is pretty close to the corner.
Well, part of the issue is, if you look at the design, how much, I mean.
All of those being specifically planted because of a specific reason, you know, and. They're mature trees, uh, you know, like, you hate to see a part of the history of men, and, and, you know, and specifically her family and. And what they, why they did what they did in terms of putting those streets here, to take them down, just to widen the sidewalk.
Is there a, I mean, it sounds like we were inviting them down to set a, maybe have them see. A different perspective, but is there anything we as the, the town can do with the state to prevent it from happening, cause if there is. I would love to see us take an action to try to mitigate.
Well, we're doing that right now, that's why I had them come in to do that presentation. And ask them to take another look.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost, and taking the land, do we even have anything aside from asking them not to and say it doesn't make any sense?
Yeah, but we can, well, the, the, the short answer is, we can always, we can always take the state to court, a petition, petition, petition.
Yeah, so that would be the avenue that. Conservation expense on the trees. I don't know, there, I'm.
It's, it's part of the state land.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, because it's, it's Route sixty, so it's a state highway, so they have jurisdiction. You know, and we'd have to, we'd have to do that, to see if we have. You know, we'd have to do, see if we do the.
Alright, so I, I have extended, you know, I'm gonna extend an offer to them to at least, at the minimum. Take a look at her property, if there's other areas that we want them to also look at, you know, please let me know, and. If you wanna be there, you're most welcome to be there. For you, two cents. That's about it at this point. Laura's back, yay.
Yay, welcome back.
Hey, just a quick question, senior center, the, the contract for the architect, any ETA from, or can you get an ETA?
To tell you the truth, I can do that contract, you know, it, it, that's a template.
Okay.
All you do is insert all that, I gave you the template from another place.
Yeah.
And you put the name, address, and then you reference it by the actual document, is, you know, attachment A. Which defines the terms of, of what they're going to do, but that's their employment, that's the scope, right, the scope and the fee scope.
So we're just getting the questions, it sounds like something we could close on if we have to, and in short order. But Karis would still wanna say, yeah, I'm good with that, right?
Yeah. Like I said, if you want me to do all those, I can push Karen to do it.
I'm just an alternate, I'll defer.
Well, you're the one who was in, in conversation about it, cause that was a week that I wasn't there, so.
Yeah, if we, I mean, I think we, if we had a draft, I mean, before we sign anything.
Yes.
Are we, I mean, what is, what?
We're drafting language that.
Yeah, I have a template that's used for.
Are you like actively drafting it, or are we?
It's a, it's a template, it's a fill and block, and then, then it's a second. That, like I said, you can reference the initial engagement letter.
Right.
Which defines the scope.
Yep.
And gives you the price, total not to exceed, and then, and then we can address it specifically if there are other issues in the contract. We can run it to Karis and say, hey, what do you think of this, she may say, no, this doesn't work, but at least the work is done, and it's okay, it's okay, we don't pay any money.
What is, what's the timeframe for this?
I could probably do that in like a couple hours.
Yeah, I would still want Karis to.
Right.
Oh, yeah, 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 I, I, I'm not saying you shouldn't have it, absolutely, but I've done it myself, honestly, different projects, I do.
I, I, I think it's with town councils, I don't want to put more work on your plate, I'd rather have town council close, but I think time might be. Of the essence, so if you do something, that's great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah.
Thank you.
Right. Casey.
I have a couple of quick comments.
I know, um, we had done citizen statements and petitions at the beginning, I, I think you, um. I didn't see you raise your hand, but I, I, do you have an issue or just things that you wanna say, or what?
Something you wanna say, a small issue with the town clerk's office?
Um, if it's, well, again, citizen statements and petitions, um. I, I, I'd be glad to open it back up if you have statements you wanna make. In other words, we put, well, the, we set an agenda. It has to be published, but at the beginning um, of the meeting, we opened the meeting, and then we have citizen statements and petitions, where any town resident. Any citizen can come up and make a statement, that was at the beginning.
I didn't know that.
And I, right, I, I know that, and I, I, and I apologize, you sat through this whole meeting. But certainly, I'm, you're welcome to, I'm, I'm welcoming you to make your statements and petitions now.
Right.
Sure. You, you may if you wish, or you can sit where you want, where you are.
The town clerk's office is closed this.
Yes, it is.
Um, which surprised me, uh, I had a appeal that I need to file. And I just can't believe, you know, I need to have this, you know, I need to go to the town clerk's office, have this appeal. Registered login, um, and I just don't understand why that is. You have a clerk and an assistant clerk, and they both have to take vacations on the same week.
Well, I, here, here's what I would, here's what I'd say, is that she's an elected official, as elected official, she sets her own hours. When she does take, she's entitled to vacation like everybody else, there are many, many times when she has been away at conferences, takes vacation time, when she has a. Retired assistant, another former elected town clerk fills in there. I don't know the circumstances, why they both were unavailable this week, I know it's very rare, but I also know it was well-publicized for at least a month. On the town website, so it's not as, I'm, I'm sure if you didn't realize, and you walk in, everybody walks in who's surprised for the, for these four days. Um, I will tell to her credit, you know, she was still available by email for things. Um, she's been checking her email every day, cause I've been pestering her still, and I, I, I bet Jody has and others too. And she's still, right, and she's still answering, so I can tell you, that this happens to be the week, and if you need something this week. It's a bad week for that, but it, it's very rare, it was well-publicized, and it's one of. I, I can't remember the last time when, um, except for a holiday, when that office was not open with at least one of the others, so that neither of them there, I don't know why.
This happened to be that.
When you needed it.
The one time in fifty years I go to the top clerk's office, it's closed.
Well, maybe this, maybe there's some other way we can get it done. Um, a- anything else?
Uh, no, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you for. Okay. All right, just stick around. Right. I just need a motion to adjourn, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody.